Good evening. This is the November 12, 2024, open public meeting of the Needham Library Board of Trustees, being held via hybrid format, allowing remote attendance. First, I will take a roll call to confirm the trustees, library staff and persons anticipated to be on the agenda are present and can hear me. Trustees, K. Cahill?
Here.
Rob Pettit?
Here.
J. Fialkov?
Yeah.
Michael O'Neil?
Here.
Megan Small?
Yeah.
Joshua Small? And me, Eric Grave, I'm here. Library staff, library director, Robert McFane.
You're.
Administrative specialist Jenna White.
Yeah.
Program specialist Gail and Dennett.
Yeah.
And recording secretary Faith Chrisley. Not here yet. All right.
Oh, boy.
We can start taking some notes and we'll have the transcript as well. I haven't formally started it yet. Do you have any representatives from the Library Foundation leaving this evening? No, we do not. This meeting is being recorded. If there is a problem that prevents the completion of this meeting, we will reconvene at 7:00 PM on December 10, 2024. I hereby call this meeting of the Needham Board of Library Trustees to order at 7:05 PM. Reminder, citizens are welcome to speak for up to three minutes each, not to exceed a total of 10 minutes. Citizens are encouraged to inform the library director in advance of their intention to speak. Those who provide advance notice will be called upon first. While the board will take public comments under advisement, there may be no opportunity for discussion or debate during this portion of the meeting. Seeing no public comments, we move two minutes. I request a motion to approve the minutes of the October 8, 2024 meeting, and then we can discuss. So moved. Can I get a second? Thank you. All right. Looking at the meeting minutes, any corrections? Yeah.
I think it was the paragraph about the cost of the reconciled design on the bottom of page three.
Yep.
I wasn't really sure what the section was saying. Or reworded.
I feel like I actually use the same question. I tried to make these numbers add up in some way.
Yeah.
You know, since this is the official record, it would be nice to kind of have them in an orderly way that results in the final request of 2.4 million.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of beyond the wordsmithing within a meeting.
I did create a little table.
You created a table?
That I can pass on to faith if it's need accurate, so.
Yeah, that's a good question. Did you reference like the slides to try and recreate it?
No, I just used the figures here and tried to see how they.
Do you want me to look at the slides on the recording?
Was that?
Do you want me to look at the slides on the recording and try to recreate it?
Makes sense. I mean, just the sequences that we, we say. We agree the request is in, okay, so we had. The total cost is supposed to be 1.5 million, budgeted by the time you still came at 1.7. So requesting, you know, 1.6.
Yeah.
But then we ended up with at 2.7, the request on page four says will be the request 2.4. So the question is like, how did we get from 1.6 to 2.4? And I think it's because of this little list at bottom three where it says, you see, the soft costs, furniture equipment, heating costs, soft costs. I did some addition subtraction. Those things seem to add up to 1.155. And if you add that, it comes to 2.7. And then on page four, 454 was already allocated, so that's deducted. And then you result into a request total, finally, 2.4 million, so.
I can send it to reconciliation chart.
Okay, and then we do it. Okay.
Yeah, the 1.6 plus these other costs equals the 2.386 million.
Okay.
And then you add on the 454,000 we got for design last night.
That's taken. Yeah.
I texted you that I was running five minutes.
Just for me, this is a public record, so we kind of want, if people look this up, it's like, we want these add numbers to kind of add up.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I'll look at what you send me, Rob, and then I'll redo it and I'll.
Well, there's some question of process. Because we can't really approve the meeting minutes speculatively.
Can we postpone for the next minute till the next meeting?
It's possible. So, well, I think that's fine. But before I close or before I table this, I do want to solicit any other changes that folks want to propose. So we can get all of those out of the way for a revision ahead of December.
This is probably related and truly a net, but for every dollar figure, we should just put a dollar sign.
Okay, yeah, like 1.6 million.
And sometimes you have a decimal with zeros and sometimes you don't, just to be consistent.
But at different points, you wanted it a certain way. So do you want one decimal? Not you personally, but the board as a whole, so.
I don't need decimal zero zero.
I don't feel like that's.
Yeah, we just did, about a year and a half ago, we were doing no decimals, if there was just around figures, so that's sort of comfortable, if you can.
No sense, in other words, you know.
Other changes?
Knit on page two, the other important change is to entry force. Is it new?
Is. Great. Other. Proposed changes for the minutes? All right, so I'll ask you to review the changes in the numbers and get those right. And then we'll table this then for.
Did we not also decide that was posted into the trustee who's a secretary? Yes, I thought we had added that along the way.
This is at the end on page seven?
At some point when I was secretary, it was there.
Yes. So Mike, you, your signature will be at the end.
Of these.
The minutes, right? Is that what you're saying, Derek?
Yeah, what we're going to do from now on.
Yeah.
Yeah, that way we know that they were reviewed.
Yep.
And, yeah, that's not a problem.
All right. Great. I honestly don't know if we have to vote on table.
I was about to ensure a motion for that.
You're saying we do?
We have a table, moved, right?
We have it, we have the.
We already had a vote to.
Yeah, we need a majority vote. Here we go. So, so I would need a a motion to move to table in a second.
Motion to. Now you got me off this. Motion to, what is it?
Table.
Table, the minutes.
Table the motion to, to approve the minutes.
For the minutes?
Yeah, great, second, second. All right, we're all here in person, so.
Sorry, folks.
We do majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, aye, no, okay, great. So we will table this for next meeting. Let's make sure we put that on the agenda. Two meeting minutes. All right, so moving on to the next part of our agenda. We did do roll call. Josh has arrived.
Bring it up for everybody. Sorry, I just need 20 minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Just.
Yeah.
I'll do that. I need to talk to that.
All right, so, Director.
Thank you. I'll just highlight some highlights. So the first one is the children's department. Put on this fantastic kind of library event, hopefully, something that got discovered. We did it for Halloween for two hours. This room became creepy central. We had stations, arts and craft stations and candy, of course, we had. Former, but we had creepy animals from chinchillas to legless lizards here. It was fun, so we encouraged his come in their costume day early. They got candy. They did all sorts of fun activities, had a bunch of kids. 139 people came. It was nice. It was a drop in.
Very exciting. I was here briefly and it was quite a nice event. Yeah.
So it was a great child with Paula and the children's staff, and we had volunteers from Circulation helping out. So it was a great effort and low cost and lots of fun. So it's something we look forward to doing again in the future. That is fantastic. We participated in the park and recs. What are a couple of different names? Paul and, what was the other name that's? The spooky walk.
Spooky Walk.
Oh, spooky walk, a little.
But it's part of that day.
Yeah, Saturday, October 26th, we provided storytime as part, as part of that. So Elliot did spooky storytimes. So it was fun to participate in that townwide effort to scare children in a friendly way. October, I may have mentioned at a previous meeting, was National Anti-Bullying or Bullying Convention Month. And to mark that, the Needham Exchange Program Foundation gave us generous donation to have a storytime focused on anti-bullying and anti-bullying or kindness message to children and then a puppet ship. We also were able to purchase a number of dozens of titles to add to the children's collection. Being kind and differences and how to treat one another. Like this, this is going to be, so it was a really interesting display. Please reach out to books. They are fantastic.
They are.
Like, they are just heart wrenching too and really.
Great art.
Yes, and great art. So we had a display up for the month and the Exchange Foundation members came in from the club and had a photo op. And it was great. That's, we'll see the news you need from that. And it was just a nice, much long recognition of that issue. And it was nice to be to have this very active townwide group of recognize us and our ability to connect with kids and that's not discussed. Paula did a steam storytime of robotics that should be at the Newman School for a bunch of car striders at the end of the park. Moving on to reference departments. So we were notified last month by a town resident that our monthly newsletter is not great for people with disabilities to access. So Gail wants to spend some time meeting also from town manager's office. She's in charge of communications with town of Needham. Going over what changes we need to make to our newsletter to make it more readable for everybody.
Are you talking about library notes?
Yes.
Let's just say it's going to look a lot like it was to begin. Okay, so it's going to be a little bit longer than what we've been doing, but it will be able to read by anybody.
Yeah, so what we have now, we've got an image with text on and images just not very accessible at work. So, so Gay has met with Amy and so we're making that changes over the next few months or a couple of months. It's a longer process, but it's worth it.
And we have images embedded or?
Oh, no, no, there will still be images in there. It's just that instead of the poster, we're using actual images that we used to make the poster. And links will now be more visible instead of being worked here. No, we'll actually have a link out. So that people can understand, yeah, that's something you want to go to. Eventually, we're going to have that to our website, but I'm going to wait that order.
Is it going to use a machine readable for like people who are like visually impaired?
Yes, anyone who's using any kind of software that actually reads the text, that's one of the issues we're having with this letter. So we are converting it over. I've already started doing some of it and we'll do more of it in the next month or two.
And the bigger she, Amy is working on the town book site and will help us over the next, I guess it's federal law that within two years. You mean, we need, so she's getting a head start and working on the town's website and are helping us as well. Our best. Thank you, Kate, for all that. Extra work and learning is.
It's really important.
Rob, do they, do they have anything with just, just looking at the entire community of people with disabilities? Is there any component that will include real? Or is that just something?
In our digital communications, no, this is the software that will read it. But as we, more in relation to our four phases and the renovation of the building, we will make sure that all signage and lighting is compliant. And, you know, not just for visually impaired, but colors and fonts for, for all people. Thank you. Next one, I just wanted to mention that. So we have an employee who was at Ellen, I wrote Gay and Ellen and Erin, sorry. Gail and Erin volunteered and they helped out with an HR sponsored event in October to recognize World Mental Health Day. So we dropped on a note tech afternoon. Town employees, so Gail and Erin over brought a lot of our note tech stuff for people to sit down and crochet or read or do a puzzle. So it was, it was great. I included a quote here from there and just to both thoughts about participating. So that was nice that we got to invite ourselves to participate.
She taught a whole bunch of people how to crochet. We brought down a whole bunch of yarn and a whole bunch of crochet books.
Yeah, so besides our engagement with the wider community at Patriots, we're making an effort to engage with our colleagues across departments. And with the, the resources here and also just the great work we know. So when they interact with residents, don't know what we offer. Techno services. I think I mentioned last time, this may have been almost done, but the shifting of the adult migration collection is complete. So please take a look. It's like really cool. They did a lot of work, moved over 26,000 volumes. There's display shelving.
That was a typo. 26,000 volumes, they personally physically moved?
Yes, yeah, it was a huge project. So it's, it's more inviting. It's great work. So we're very thankful for them and to our building maintenance staff for adjusting shelving to make sure we could incorporate the oversized collection with, we are in the lawn, so on the product shelf front there because it's oversized.
Yeah. That is, it looks great.
Nerdy, but it's exciting.
It looks, I mean, it looks great. It's just nerdy. It's, there's an aesthetic quality to it.
And you're going to be getting the new, what do you call them, sort of end taps or the signs that go at the end of it?
Yeah, and the new end tap signage is much larger than before, so.
Easy to find.
Then tech services, great success with some volunteers this fall. One who has finished pulling multiple copies for our fiction collection. So 452 extra copies. These are copies that we purchased when these titles were new and popular.
Yeah.
And they're no longer new and popular, so we don't need them in our collection. We still have a copy, but we don't need a second or a third copy. So it freed up some space for growth and just made, makes it easier for that session, like those extra copies. And then the shifting to re-catalog and relabeling of the teen graphic novel collection continues. That's a big thing because they have to be re-catalogued and relabeled, not just moved.
Why is it after catalog, are they going into different categories?
So the, the label is being changed, so they'll just reflect in a way.
Within the catalog, more information is added, but within the catalog, you could see a list of the entire. So if it's part of a series, it has to have the series name added to the catalog.
Technology and Archives. Before I go on this, I just want to also give a shout out to Danielle, who continues to act as interim reference supervisor, helping out reference departments in addition to normal work. So Digital Commonwealth, which is the VPL, has our reports and is digitizing them. So once that is done, the physical copy will return to us and go back to within the archives, but the digital version will be out there. For all to easily do the research and yeah, and all admit costs to us, except for some staff at the time devoted to that. So Danielle, the work in this room, the carousel has been completed today. So as moved here, the two radio devices have been upgraded and each thing by core of the company's monitor. You can see it's here and working and they came back Friday and then today and finished up with the firmware needs. So all is good, knock on wood for now.
Is that the work that makes it easier to use now?
Yes, it is. We can now connect the air media to your Mac. And we have also successfully been able to connect portable devices like phones and iPads. Using that connection, we know that it will show screen. Dawson Note will go out to YouTube. It probably will not do any of the paid services available between or movie or something like that off of Paramount or something like that. It won't do that. But it will go out to YouTube and it will be able to be operated off your phone.
Was this work funded by the friends under that Darcy's good one?
As far as I know, this was us. We have a contract with our carousel for service like this.
Probably a good thing that it doesn't allow for streaming services right now, since that would be illegal.
We also had the micro system straightened out and you know exactly what is connected to what and what can go on and those are all set.
The carousel was great. They flew someone up from Miami to, to a lot of this work. Danielle's finishing some critical BIOS updates on all devices and we did migrating stuff to the Windows 11. So a lot of good work there. Moving on to personnel, some updates. This section, which I'll be very happy when it starts to shrink. So I sent a email last week that we hired assistant director. That's all you get right now.
Yeah. Well, we're excited about it.
We're really, yeah.
Yeah.
This is a stellar candidate. And so they've signed the off letter and they just need some time to let the current employer know and the colleagues know.
Sure.
As soon as that happens, I will let you know.
Is there a timeframe expiration?
I will let you know.
Ask to about this assistant director, sort of under your management method, what do you think the main tasks of the assistant director are? Like the primary things that you'd like them to be in charge of?
That's interesting. Um. There's like a now answer and probably a long term answer. So now, and that's by 25, the action thing, so it was I put it on the backboard. So once the assistant director settles in and maybe the settling period will be shorter than normal. We really have to tackle the action. Because there's a lot of good and important things there and we've lost some time because I haven't prioritized it. So that, but going forward, helping out with personnel issues and hiring. That is a big, big deal, but also somebody who is creative and innovative, but understands staffing limitations. So looking for creativity and innovative thinking, but we don't want to set ourselves up for failure intentionally. It's fine to fail, but yeah, and then somebody to bounce ideas off of and also someone to help me explain and tell me what I'm wrong. But the day-to-day tasks. Yeah, they might be involved in scheduling issues if necessary. But it'll be fun to figure out together, but there are some like that's, but I think that important thing is sort of helping implement the trustee's vision for, you know, that the strategic plan and the action plans. Show. Yeah.
Nice explanation. Thank you.
I don't know.
Oh, it's good. Very helpful.
But so they'll come and meet everybody, of course, as soon as they can. Really excited about that. So moving on to.
Sorry, we'll maybe have to start putting in the PDF, okay?
Information's gone.
I know it's a type, there's not much left to be.
Right, and then we thought holidays and stuff, so maybe I gave it away. So Cheryl Kelly started, she's been part-time circulation assistant. She started at an acquired journey enrichment, who's also a part-time children's perfect circulation assistant. She starts weekly tomorrow. That is really exciting. So we are fully staffed or functionally staffed through the circulation department. I jinxed us by being very happy on Friday about we were only one opening reference supervisor. And then this woman came into an email. So Kayla Heston, who's part-time children's librarian, has resigned. She's has a full-time job, which is great for her. She's really fantastic. So we were lucky to have her even for four months. And we wish her the best. But I remember I grew. So we're moving quickly and hope to have that job post by the end. And then the reference supervisor position may be posted again. We have a couple of leads that we are working on. So we'll see if we need to post it again.
I have a question about that, actually. Does this, does the town have the ability to increase the salary when you get to this point of like multiple reposting? You know, something to change up the incentives if we're not getting candidates?
We had this discussion today. And it's a good salary. I don't think that's the issue.
Okay.
I don't know what the issue is.
Yeah.
One thing is that when the the job is posted, we need to post the hiring range, which is not the salary range. So uh if it is posted again, if it is, if these two leads don't work out, um we will let people know that it's a salary range that is for
What's the difference between the hiring range and the salary range?
Otherwise, I don't know if to tell them like that, but like the hiring range is like step one to step four, but there are ten steps. So as it's presented, it says salary with a range.
Right.
So that would make you think that's the range of the job, but that's the hiring range. So we're going to use language to clarify that that is, that there's growth is really significant growth.
Okay. Is it incentive-based or just a flat rate?
The steps occur automatically each year on July first. And this is outside of a goal that we set is applied across the whole table.
So they're not actually putting up a monetary range on job posting?
They are, but it just reflects the limits for our hiring range.
Okay.
Based on our budget. It doesn't reflect this, oh, the full salary range from the first step to the last step. Which if they stayed here for ten years, it'd be at a really nice
Gotcha.
Step ten.
Right.
And then a few of us went to Neela in Portland, Maine at the end of October, so that is well worth it and very warm, eighty degrees one day in Portland where we got to be inside.
I forgot my winter jacket, but
Yeah. But um lots of great programs we got to go to and vendors to meet. So that is well worth it and three of the attendees, Jenna, Deborah, and Kelsey, received scholarships in the Mass Library System that paid for all of their expenses. That's approaching thirty-six hundred dollars that we did not have to pay, so that's fantastic.
Congrats.
So that comes about through like you have to, they have to apply or something?
Yes, the Mass Library System sort of let the community know briefly that this opportunity existed, so we jumped on it and so the next round is December one through December fifteenth, so and that covers conferences from February through August twenty-five. So there's the Mass Library Association Conference in North Falmouth in May, so we'll talk to staff to see who wants to attend that and make sure that they apply for scholarship to now, because they have significant money, seventy-five thousand dollars for each of these rounds to give away. They want to give it away, so we might as well.
They can raise their hands.
Falmouth in May, that's nice.
And then I had some meetings, it's the last meeting. And then phase one on the team expansion and innovation, so we're in an interesting part of the process right now. It's design development, which is going to end again this month and the design, the cost estimate based on that work will happen in early December and be done before the December meeting at PPBC, which is the Monday night before the trustees meeting. So the architects will be at PPBC to present the new cost estimate, recent design developments. And then they'll be here at the December trustees meeting to do the same presentation with that new cost estimate. So we've been meeting every two weeks with Brett, Nicole, Roy, and Hank during design development. So we're meeting tomorrow afternoon. And this is a meeting where they'll bring in swatches and start looking at some of the furniture that's to me that will make up part of the team. The last meeting was so good. The last meeting two weeks ago, it was all about the lighting plan, the space, the power plan. All this sort of behind-the-scenes stuff, and so we had lots of important input and the contractors that they hired were so responsive to our staff. It just felt really good, you know, that it's not just Brett and Nicole and Hank who are listening to us. It's the people that they've surrounded themselves with, so I feel really good about that. Yeah, so it's been really positive. It's great. Just to let you know that we've had initial discussions with the LFM and Friends leadership just about possibility. No commitment and no ask now, but the possibility that we may need to ask them for some money to help support the, you know, either this phase or a future phase, you know, if there are costs going to the box or there's some value that there that we don't want to we may be coming to them and asking them. That's been a fruitful discussion. There've been great positive response to that. So it's not something that we're talking much about with town. We're not going to talk in May saying that that's the foundation of giving so much money and therefore we don't need the town to cover the whole cost of the construction. So Kate said we could ask, we can move forward with the town ask for the full cost of the construction. We don't have to talk to Finn Coller or anyone else at this point about using other monies in order to have the town spend less. It's just enough backlogs.
It was never intended to reduce what the town was spending. I thought always just supplementary is supplementary to keep it by me.
We don't wanna bait it into our plan now and then how maybe those extra costs come up. Funds aren't available or we're borrowing. And um we're still leaving and discussing temporary location of collections and moving things. Because it's gonna move quick, quickly. This is gonna look quick. Everybody, this is gonna look quick with it. You know, if you have to be prepared for approval at any time because contract will be awarded against construction.
Yeah.
So we're talking about seven, you know, months from now, construction. So our staff are working and leading and planning so that um come early spring, we've got ducks in our internal, so we're not holding up anything, but Tommy does.
Yeah, of course. Very exciting.
And and you mentioned that there will not be a need to meet with Finn Coller about this, but we'll have our usual American consulting call. I think as she goes annually December December, January, there's an annual meeting with the director of the library. Finance and the understand.
Will the offer be much?
Uh, yeah, I've been wanting.
They'll also review the capital request. Yeah, right, but that'll be, we might discuss it at the same time as the operating budget, but it'll be a separate item, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, because it's gonna be a specific article. It'll be an article that you'll be Yeah, so we'll have to defend, yeah, we'll have to defend that to Finn Coller.
Yes.
In a meeting. Yeah.
There'll be some grounds. With new water heater. The town electrician does some great work, should be exterior lighting at the Highland Avenue entrance. Changing out light fixtures, so like now the carpet and the scrum screens, that's great. And then pending items, the building filters will be changed settled on through the week, we think. Financial reports are listed here, the spending that we've done with city trust funds. This is here, any questions? Those are attached. Everything is on track for according to the spending that's been approved by trustees by vote twenty-five. Any questions? And we have a gift, one gift tonight from Roseville Bacon, seventy dollars that we'll vote on later. The statistics report for September is listed here. And maybe I'm going to talk about that. One thing just to, we're still going through the the downloadable magazine jump because of the class fall and overdrive or maybe did an automatic removal type of thing. Patents, so that's September, the September comparisons.
Yeah. And there's the revenue category was empty.
Yes, yeah, just we'll have that next one.
I wanna play with those Excel formulas so that they don't report a negative one hundred percent if it's empty. And there's a way to just kind of tweak those so that they are also empty.
Yeah. Move on to the D I B staff efforts. Materials purchased are listed here as well as displays and programs that we had in the month of October. Questions, so make sure everybody in town feels included. The work that we are doing. Along with that technical services has its chart of the occurrences of categories that we have to our collection in October. Some of the report for October. The drawn figure is high because we, as our important volunteer, we did great work in double fixing and extra copies and then that's done some work with the organization that's as well as while we were organizing that watch. Questions there? If not, that's why twenty-six operating. So some information about FY twenty-four because town looks at most most recently completed fiscal year and was spending there and did not do to decide FY twenty-six budget request. So this opening card gap talks about what happened in FY twenty-four and how much money was returned to the town and why. So as you can see here, most of the money returned was from salaries.
Yep.
And probably all understand why.
Yep.
So that's information is important. You also need to explain if any return is three percent or higher, so we didn't have three percent return for expenses, so we explained that. That was sort of related to salaries turned back, you know?
Yeah.
The people.
Spend the money.
See, that is important information that town considers when deciding how FY twenty-six.
And I see that seven of these sixteen full-time positions were vacationed for us. That's a huge But that's a part-time, is that, say, like two in January, was it higher this year or about the same?
Was it higher? FY twenty-four?
Yeah.
I'm not sure it was higher, but when I joined here, there were some part-time positions that were on hold to be filled.
Right.
So it may have been a longer period without a number of part-time people in place. So this summer, we hired a number of part-time. I'm not sure. Turnover at FY twenty-four was higher than the normal year.
I know we've discussed multiple times about trying to help about this problem. Number of part-time versus full-time and turnover and everything, and I think, I think you've already discussed that that's to future or assets from the town, but there is a bunch more.
But it's complicated because to incorporate a full-time position into a department with me limiting some part-time positions, so that would mean letting people go. And so unless, unless some of the parts I might be applying for full-time. Right, but I mean for us to get to thirty-seven point five hours for a full-time position. Would be better than the time it has to work out with the town because
Is, so how, is there a plan though that would, there's not a figure out how to deal with this?
No.
So that there could be adjustments?
No, not, okay, not, not yet. So part of this this year that's on my to-do list is doing a staffing analysis of the library and then bringing consultants to to also
Right.
Do an independent analysis and give us real direction. But right now, there's not a plan.
So the plan is, you got a plan, you have a consultant that you'll figure out.
But right now, there's
Not happening yet. That's
So yeah. So our FY twenty-six operating budget request is almost two point six million dollars, which is a large increase that more than eight and a half percent. But a part of, a big part of that request is for two additional staff members joining us of part-time team librarian and the time community outreach server. Both who work in the reference department. So outside of those requests are increases just three point seven percent for the last year. So one of the extra requests we're asking for is to incorporate the annual maintenance cost of our website formally into the operating budget. So as many of the friends in the foundation generously funded the creation of the library's website and since then its cost has been covered. Our operating budget. We're unfunded lineup, so we have paid out of our budgets that have been make sure that other line items have been underspent. Break even. So our request this year is to formally incorporate that forty eight hundred dollars into our budget so we don't need to do what we have to do. So we'll see how that, that goes. So, so the two new staff members and this website maintenance cost are the only requests to our budget. There are, and you can see the attachment I emailed out this morning, got to send you last Friday. Shows the existing line items and the changes. Apps are created between F I twenty five and F I twenty six for individuals to take part in, and why there are changes there. So we are looking to move for F I twenty six, the overdrive advantage cost into the operating budget. You may remember that this is something that's been funded from library state. So
A lot of years.
Right, we've had overdrive for more than fifteen years, so it's, it's past its pilot project status. And in F I twenty four, we had about hundred and twelve thousand checkouts by more than thirty seven hundred lead up residents. So this is this is as important as our physical collection.
Yeah.
And that cost twenty six thousand dollars really should be part of our operating budget. So that's the vast majority of that thirty thousand dollar increase to that line item. So we'll see how that argument goes. We've had a meeting this morning with town hall leadership to go over our
It's a logical argument, but they seem receptive to it?
All of them? Yes. I think they understand. I, I, it's, it's not, I think it's just where do the dollars fall and how many dollars there are. Kate's really understands.
Yeah.
But they also have to just make sure.
Who in the end needs to be persuaded?
This is being recorded.
Oh, okay.
Be persuaded, I'm not sure. So, okay, meeting. But
Well, there is the question, which is what are, how, how can we support you during this stage?
That's what I meant.
Yeah. I'm not sure. This is a new process to me, so I'm not sure. Trustees, you know, I think when we go to Bincom, you'll be with me. I'm not sure how receptive decision makers are to conversations outside of meetings or whatnot, but I'll keep everybody fully informed with all the information needed if something feels right and we want to make a case of it.
Yeah, well, I mean, the one thing that comes to mind is there's history on the side of some of these requests, and we might be able to support some of that history in context in the argument that we're making as the library to town. And so, you know, Jay was heavily involved in the website, for instance. You know, as the other trustees were there at the time, but I know.
Jay and Robert and I were like.
But I know Jay was, Jay has spoken about his deep care for that particular project to me. And, and some of the other questions around staffing and things like that, we can also offer a historical perspective from our experience.
So we have, past three, we've been asked for the new, new decisions.
Yes.
Hear much about that. The outreach person and why you have decided that's the type of new staff member needs.
Yep, so both of these were in our F I twenty five action plan. Team, part-time team librarian for a second time. That was also in F I twenty four. So to speak to the part-time team librarian. Thinking of the time is going to be like F I twenty six with phase one, execution by the beginning of December. And the schedule for the part-time librarian would be working the key things that everyone doesn't work. Three nights, there doesn't work, and then the Saturdays, there doesn't work. So that we have a team under here in the building supporting those patrons. Monday through Thursday evenings and Saturdays, so we could expand programming, we could have proper staff and oversight. And support services to teams. We're duplicating the size.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Today we have ninety six jeans upstairs. Staffed account and I expect this new space not to be any less popular. So more designated staff.
Likely more popular.
Right. Is, is needed. So that is put forward again. The full-time community outreach specialist. This would be for a reach that is not the children's department, the children's department is doing very well with outreach schools and so this would be other things where currently it's sort of a hodgepodge of staff who are involved in community outreach. We also aren't able to say yes to any requests. Cultural festivals, one thing we have to say there to in October. You know, but we should be there, you know, and we should be all sorts of places, you know, so having a reference librarian, community specialist dedicated to these issues will help us do what our strategic plan talks about, which is really engage the community, get outside of these four walls. And, you know, meet our patrons where they are and rely on to that. So that is there. And the seventy thousand, seventy five thousand dollar salary request is again, a high part of a potential hiring. It is not a step one. So we you know, I just note that, that it gives us flexibility when hiring, if we need to go that high, but we would not just jump to that.
Makes sense.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. I just want to make sure to hear about why you thought those two things were important.
Those are good questions, Ken. Other questions about the budget?
These sheets, this represents all of the increased requests that are above beyond previous year.
Increases or decreases to specific line items. There were some line items that did not have an increase or decrease that were done by. So this is not entire expense. Or salaries, salaries at the top too. So one thing I should just note about the fifty one twenty, which is the part-time salaries line item, there's a decrease here at seven thousand two hundred twenty seven dollars.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean we let anybody go or anything. When we, when Ashley designed before we posted her position, she had a Saturday as part of her schedule where like five people on the segregation desk, which is not necessary. So when we posted that that Saturday came off, and so that's what Cheryl's kind of worked that schedule about that Saturday. So that's the only, you know, change. That's not quite, or wasn't, that's a difference. But everything else reflects.
Uh, next stages on this.
It's due on this.
Do you know the timeline?
I should have asked.
The next stage would be a meeting with both and from the library. They come here. I don't know where the working sheet.
Yeah, and I'm not sure who the.
There were two last year out of that. After that, there's a gap in time where Kate, Patrick and her office put together their full proposal for the whole town, which impedes a balanced take of everyone's requests. And separately, the financial committee puts together their recommendations for the budget. And between those two, any discrepancies were worked out. From here, I think it's really just a pincom, is that meeting and then a pincom event and that.
Yeah, I think Katie mentioned December maybe or early January for the pincom meeting. But I think that these are all happen.
We get, it'll be sooner, yeah.
Or at least the initial.
Yeah.
Reach.
And it'll, that'll be someone who gets to really dig into the library, the meat of the libraries that they can advocate for, like so that when they're trying to balance out all of the different departments' requests, they are able to weigh them with knowledge.
Yeah, right. Somebody who can understand after talking to you about why certain questions were made and then whole pincoms talking, will have knowledgeable liaison. So I'd be interested to know, since there's been a lot of pincom change in terms of personnel. Once you know who it's going to be this year.
Last year, I believe it was Karen. Yeah, I believe last year.
Right.
And then an older gentleman here was asking the boss. So I don't know if he's still on the pincom or I'm not sure.
Does the chair or other library trustees attend the liaison meeting?
I think in the past, when the liaison comes to me, what, what do you think?
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
Do we, do one of the trustees, perhaps the chair, ever meet with the liaisons during that meeting? That is prior to the full.
Prior to the pincom meeting, but I don't think met in the past with pincom as kind of an information, you know, Jay and I, we did that a while back. I think it's a good idea. So, but I don't think there's been a formal meeting with the liaison.
I think when the liaison comes to me with the director, I don't remember that any of us have participated in that meeting.
I don't remember hearing anyone report about it.
I've never been at a pincom related meeting in the library. I've only gone to
But then when the pincom holds a school meeting, the chair definitely goes and other trustees who want to go, they go. That's my.
If it is helpful, let us know when it is and try to make time travel.
Would the chair have an opportunity to add input or is that just something?
Well, if it's fact finding, then they can ask questions, but if I don't keep all of that from the last. Yeah. Yeah. Could we use it?
Yeah. It's also a great opportunity to it's what we do.
Yeah, that's right.
Sausages made. Something to come to.
Yes.
Sorry.
And we lost Louise Miller, who used to be our liaison, was very knowledgeable. Then she, she is now town clerk. And us, yes, she was, she was on the elephant, but she's.
Any more on the budget? Or move to a new business?
The business, we have an action item tonight. It's devoted to accepting this gift, which tonight is one gift from the vacants for seventy dollars. Honor of Gil Hedges.
Can I get a motion to accept this gift?
Second.
Second, great.
Just a little discussion is that, does anyone have any understanding of why this gift is being made in honor of Gil?
Yes.
Birthday?
It's a birthday. Okay, no, okay.
Happy occasion.
Because Gil Hedges is a former trustee and
And she's active in the French still.
The French, yes.
That's lovely.
Not like she's leaving.
What is the occasion?
That's lovely. Any other discussion? Moving to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it is accepted. All right, moving on to old business. I've been looking forward to this. So updating on the library policy review. So we have two documents here that's been shared. One is a prioritized timeline. Of, of the policies that we should be reviewing, some notes about them. And then we also have a policy to start reviewing our first policy during this season on the long sides policy, which is great. And so I'll hand it over to do we want to start with the existing policy or the
First time.
Or the time. Yeah.
Together.
So I'll hand it over to both of you to figure out.
Knowledgeable one about preparation.
So Ken and I met on Friday to talk about, to go to this and then the proposed policy update on the long sides. So what we have to use is spreadsheets where the far lefty column is, is priority. And so there's a number, it's an alphabet. Thing. So the number relates to, we want to move forward with the review of policies, like creation of new policies over the next two academic school years.
Okay.
So fall through spring this year and then next year, fall through spring again. So the one, two, three, four, five, six relates to one, two, three being fall, winter, spring this year, and then four, five, six being fall, winter, spring next year. A, B, and C relates to C are policies that need to be created. These are existing policies that we believe need small revisions and are kind of easy ones. And then B's are existing that need aren't easy, but need revision.
Got it.
So we wanted to include A's in these time periods that we had so.
So we didn't load ourselves.
It looks like there's one B.
Lose the B.
And children in the, children in the library should be.
Oh, there's two of them.
First page. Okay.
I cite this very hard.
Yeah, it's a little larger. Sorry.
Because it, the small type.
Small type and the color.
The color contrast.
So that's what the priority means, that we have things we can achieve each time period with the A's. Are, are the colors tied to priorities? The orange are the new policies we need created. Yellow are ones need revision. I don't know what.
So the bar at the top, orange bar says new policy needs to be created. Yellow bar at the top needs to be updated, right?
Yeah.
Green is ones we should start discussing because they're one and two.
Except it doesn't include two.
I'm, I'm guessing. So so departments we've met to come up with this prioritization that Ken and I reviewed. And we think it's achievable. Let's go to the next two years, we can address all these and be ready for phase-related team, we need a team run policy. So that's why that's a one C, we need to get that done sort of later.
Right.
You can turn that to evolve it. Like, is it like it? What is the policy?
It's not an appropriate behavior policy. It's more about the, the teamwork specifically. So everybody who comes into this building needs to follow like the appropriate behavior policy. So the team room policy. Will be about the use of the team.
Space.
Yeah, just want to make sure we have.
I just don't know what that.
Sign or something. That's how you use of this is, you know, pursuant to the policy, which can be on the website, is going to be posted or whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I don't think it needs to be acknowledged, but I think, you know, making sure that it is, that we have a plan to.
Publicize.
Uh, yeah, put it in place that those, our people are aware of it and will follow it.
Yep, and, um. We may have other policies we want to highlight with. What's that?
Yeah.
An appropriate behavior.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So, uh. So this is a, a work in progress. Some, one thing we are, we have talked about, and we'll see how it plays out, is consolidation. So we're not sure when we're talking about, um. Borrowing from a library, do we need a separate museum pass policy? You know, can we consolidate under a borrowing, borrower services policy? Like, and see why or whatnot. So it's more, that's a conversation we are having so that we may consolidate how fewer policies, but cover the same. Topics that existing policies, like there's a parking policy. You know, maybe we have something that's.
Talk between the lines?
You know, where we consolidate that under like the use of our physical spaces or something. And this could be something simply, um, as we talked about, how it's presented on our website. You know, so that. It could be so an umbrella. It could still be. Separated, how to find the parking policy, parking section of. umbrella policy so that, uh, patrons can easily find what they're looking for. But do we really need? On power route policies, separate policies if they. Makes sense, you know? So we're not looking to have like three policies at the end of this, but we may not need thirty. It could be twenty-four or something like that.
I think that's a, a great idea with this, you know, why do you increase the ability that someone goes and look for parking policy based on the other ones that are related to a two? And then there, there's more visibility, but also it just, uh, it's overwhelming to see this number. So if somebody is going looking like.
Yeah.
Discouraged from looking at other things because there's so many things to look through. And then if it's just, and like to consolidate our patron access policy, like if everything is, is at other one header, it's a lot easier for everybody to see those things.
So we're thinking about it and we're going to be conservative and careful about it and we'll have a full discussion. With Kay, our liaison, and with our staff, but also here with you to make sure we're not missing something. In this, just to consolidate.
Uh, thanks for this work. Thank you, Kay.
Oh, well, Rob was kind of, kind of got the ball rolling and, and, you know, the consolidation, um. The goal is, right now we have a lot of policies, some of which overlap onto each other and it's, it's a bit of a hot podge, um, that have been accumulated over many years. So organizing them as Rob's talking about is kind of umbrellas. But then on the website, make sure people can click in to see the park, you know, see, there'll be a list where they can easily access the parking policy or the. Cell phone policy or whatever. So they'll be able to easily access.
The, the benefit of having the many policies is that you can find exactly what you're looking for, you know, otherwise you're not sure what policy to look for.
Yeah, so that's why on the website we'll have them.
Yeah.
You know, listed so that you can easily, you know, can I smoke in the bathroom?
No.
It's somewhat related to the parking policy, um. I've never had Dropbox drive up too, since there's always somebody putting up latches and getting out and dropping books. And that's, you know, dangerous and numbers and signs, they don't, don't stop it because it's in the middle of the crosswalk and it's so busy, you know, I don't know. I know it would.
Have we ever had?
Yeah, this. Yeah.
I think, I, I understand that the Dropbox or the drive up. Box issues have been discussed in the past.
Okay.
We don't have one.
Yeah, I know.
I know, we've never had one.
I could, I could go for hours. One of the major challenges is that to have a Dropbox on the driver's side.
Yeah.
Would put our staff at risk.
Yeah.
Put our books at risk because they'd be out in weather, out there in weather, but also have to be wheeled into the building in weather.
Yeah.
The volume of books that we receive, um, on a long weekend or during a closure means it would be overflowing. And instead of overflowing into the building, it would be overflowing into the parking lot.
Sounds like a bad idea.
Um, have you used a drive up book drop, like the one in Wellesley?
No, no, it's just off because I've just seen it.
The footprint that is required to have that loop where the driver can come up to the building. I was not in there in an official capacity, but I was sort of approached by a driver to be like, can you bring my books in for me? I was like, Lydia, I don't work yet.
Yeah. Okay, that's fine.
We have researched that with an architect, um, and then to do something that would work to, that would also keep our staff safe, which is a top priority. And also protect the investment in materials, um, would require the loss of many parking spaces.
Yeah.
But we don't have parking spaces to lose.
Right, right.
So that's a really complicated issue.
I can say like just it's like farther up from the crosswalk.
When we have, when we have people, when we have patrons approach us, we also say to them, we can run out, like if.
Yeah.
Knee surgery.
Yeah.
Like we can run out, like there are solutions, but there is not a simple and easy and intuitive solution.
These are all great points to bring up when we review that policy, but I want to keep us on time. I also want to remind folks that this is a public meeting and so we might get excited about things. We're trying to minimize the side conversations because we want to keep track of all of that in the recording and, and in the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So returning to the.
So returning to the, yes, so Rob spelled out the plan pretty well on this, which, you know, spent a little more time on the, um. You know, the, or he's got a good order coming out, but we do want to talk to our.
Yeah, and just, um, to.
Okay, more on this.
Kay and I will be meeting. On a monthly basis to, um, review what's ready to be brought to the trustees and. It's a minimal two meeting process here.
Right.
I. Some things could be longer than two meetings, but it's a minimal two presentation. Of both, but it's not a maximum two meetings of policies.
So our, our tradition has been present at one meeting, voted the next if possible, but not, it's not required. If there's too much debate to really resolve or there's unresolved issues at the second meeting. And we can have more than one policy ball in the air at one time as well.
And if anybody wants to join us, if something's like on deck that is of interest.
That's what I was gonna.
Like Kay or I know.
I was gonna say some of these things, especially when we're looking at how we might consolidate many policies into one, that would probably, that's going to take some lifting. Um, and so I would encourage us to, when we're looking ahead each, uh, month, to have folks. You know, put out there that they want to work on a particular policy and then they can work with Rob and Kay, um, on, on that research and revision. Which, before we move on to the long science policy, it'd be good to then look at what is our schedule moving forward, um, as we take this prioritization and turn it into. Meeting items for December, um, perhaps January.
So Kay and I would. Talk on Friday, that, uh, December even. Outside of the long science policy that we will be bringing forth, one A, gifts policy, one A, public use of bulletin boards and literature dissemination facilities. And then one B. Library study room of revision that, well, so those are the three that we would present.
Introduce in, in December. Because these are things that, I mean, the staff have identified that some leveled or seated.
Yeah, of course.
For them to be. That's why they're higher on the priority list.
Once the two, one Cs listed here are, don't exist. So we have to create them. So that work will, again, it just will not be probably completed for December.
Right, so if we look at.
The team room policy seems to be one that needs to be started, but not necessarily completed for a year plus until the team room is finished and struck. Like it should be done clearly before the team is done. But, and it's probably one that's going to take a lot, going back and forth with, like, legal and stuff like that as well, but.
Right, but, um. I'd rather get it done sooner than later just because of the thinking it forces us to do, make progress. With the rest of the, the process.
The process of design and construction.
Thinking through. The operation of new space and, uh, it might be something that pops up that helps.
That's a good point. Um, so if we look at then, at all of the, the one A, B, C, um, are there policies there to jump out of folks like, I really would love to, you know, help on that, give me that research? I would expect all of us to kind of take our turns as we work through these.
If I can speak briefly, just to the photography and filming policy that will be created. It's interesting because there are a couple issues there, uh, First Amendment audits that are occurring across, uh, the Commonwealth, uh, but also, um. People wanting to take photographs or film within the library for commercial purposes. So there are different issues here that are interesting and we'll have to address, and we'll have to address both of those with the consultation.
But yeah, that's, I, a comment on that and actually I'd be, I'd be happy to work on that one as well if it's interesting. The town must have like commercial policies already for other town buildings because I'm assuming that. At some point, a filmmaker or someone has asked, can I film inside your building or something like that? Like there, there must be some, like maybe not specifically in the library, but some other town department, school department, for example, must have a commercial policy, which is different from a First Amendment policy. Because these First Amendment auditors, frankly, they're probably right, as we've already said, public buildings are open for filming and stuff like that, as long as you're not harassing the staff or whatever. So I, I mean, have, have you looked into or talked into town council or school department or anything about, do these policies exist elsewhere within town?
We haven't started.
We haven't started.
And, and also for the policies that we don't have, we would assume that other libraries might have them.
Right.
To be looking at as a reference.
But this is a good point for the research for anyone who's working on that is to see what fits within their town policy and might be a reference to town policy within our policy.
Not reinventing the wheel.
Right.
Yeah, saying that these are in concert.
Right, because things that, that the town council has already approved or whatever that exists.
Is it, is it different because there, if somebody came and wanted to do something in here because they're children? That's in my consideration.
Yes.
There's also, um, you know, where I worked before, we've had a commercial photographer use a study room for photographs. We've had a fashion student come in and shoot photographs for her portfolio on staircase. We've had a senior high school want to commit to a library and take senior photographs with a photographer because.
I mean, I think they're like. Yeah. The artist that, I, I don't know the art policy, for example, but the artists that displayed here, they have their website next to the pictures that they displayed. I don't know if they do or not, but.
But also the concern is that, that these professional photographers come in and take up public space, occupy areas that.
Right, and, and, right, and then they're.
Might want.
Right, you can obviously write policies to say, yes, you can do this, but you have to apply for a permit or whatever, right? Um, like those fully, it can have to exist somewhere in maybe even in Wayman where you were from. You guys have policies that. Yes, you can, you can use our staircase, but you have to come at this time, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, this gets again to the actual discussion of the policy itself.
Yeah.
And also to your point, Josh, um, so about whether, what the town policies are for other buildings. We encountered this a few years ago. We discussed the possibility, do, does the library need a firearms policy? Our firearm, the library, and, you know, we went down the line about it and then came back to the town who said, we have, you know, basically the town has a policy. The library, you know, we would, they suggested the library not have a separate policy and that, um, we, if there's an issue, that we get in touch with the police. And the police will come and enforce whatever policies, uh, are in place already. So they suggest not have us try to.
Right.
You guys hear that, right?
We don't pre-.
Right, of course.
Was that?
So we don't pre-.
We don't pre-. Policy, but they have recourse through the town.
So I'm hearing, Josh, interested in photography and filming in the library policy. We also have teen room policy, library study rooms, public use of bulletin boards and gifts policy. Anyone else, uh? Want to get in the mix?
I think I sent you at one point the list of things that I would.
You did.
Helped, but I can't even remember what I had on my list.
I'll take a look at the team room policy.
You're interested in doing some of that research?
That doesn't exist yet, so.
Yeah.
That'll be a complicated one.
Well, no, but that would be finding out what other libraries have.
Right, because you have something over here where you have possible examples from Wellesley.
That's what the photographer. That's what the photographer.
Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Oh, I guess.
I take that back now.
But I'm imagining that this, that research process may involve looking at other library websites.
Right, and see if they have something.
Children in the library?
No children in the library.
No kids allowed. I'd be happy to look at the bulletin board and literature dissemination of literature policy.
Oh, great.
So I'll be in touch and take.
All right. Thank you for that. We'll, we'll, we'll refresh the call every, uh, every meeting as we move through these.
So we just try to present something at the next meeting.
Well.
Just as a template.
I think, I think you, you know, for those of you that volunteered to work with, uh, Robin Kay to kind of figure out where we're at with each of those, maybe you do that research and if a revision is ready. Then those can be added to the agenda for the coming months.
Okay, so our intention is that the. The I mentioned really present.
Yeah.
And that would be gifts, um. Useable and more and library searches.
So all the one As and one Bs will be covered by December and then the one Cs will probably be in research mode.
Right.
Okay.
And today we're going to review the outdoor signage.
Yeah, and that's.
Yep.
When you're ready. I think we're ready for that.
This is policy language is listed here at the top and it is called a long science policy. Uh, we had an extensive conversation.
We did a deep dive on this. It's a nice short policy.
Yeah.
I'm suggesting rename it to outdoor signage policy because not. One size.
There's different kinds of signs. They're not all stuck in one.
Right, yeah. And we, uh. Just not burying the weed as, as Kay suggested, so. Just stating what the policy is in a positive sense, but saying what the policy does rather than.
Yes, I'm burying the weed. The, the policy, the old. Yes, I'm burying the weed. The the policy, the old existing policy says Needham Republic Library makes interior bulletin board space and literature dissemination facilities available. So it goes on and on about interior postings. But this policy is supposed to be about outdoor.
And it says what you can't do when advised policy is clear and concise as far as what.
Well, so I I'm not a lawyer, so reading this as a non-lawyer and a non-communication person. The first one makes much more sense getting rid of that first sentence about the indoor policy than the second one does. So the way I'm reading the second one is, so the first one's if you get rid of that bill and local nonprofit town departments, just cut that off. The library's lawn areas are not available for program or event advertising purposes, except for a library friends of library and library foundation of Needham functions. Great. That's very straightforward.
What's the problem with the second one?
My the second one is it's much bigger.
Well, it doesn't.
It doesn't prohibit, but it doesn't say who therefore either. It says for a limited time or signs of marketing programs events or information for the library, the friends of the public library and library foundation of Needham discussion library. But it doesn't say that other people cannot.
Yeah, it doesn't say only either. So I would love the positive things. I would either add the word only to make it clear that it's only for library, the friends and the foundation.
After information.
Yeah. I also think you could take more limited time out because, you know, it's up to the discretion of the director. You can do it forever if you wanted. Uh I understand wanting to put a time in. You could also say just the library friends, Ellen may use the outdoor area to market their programs, events or information as a discretion of the director. No other program or event ever does this allow the outdoor areas.
Is let I mean, I guess the question I also have is, is that always the case? And should we have a policy that says certain other town things can be at discretion, like Needham three hundred or something like that? Maybe put a sign up on the library property. You know, I'm just so it maybe it shouldn't be used for like commercial or advertising, but other talent organization or other town departments might want to use our like physical grounds for other things or like like the like the fireworks or something.
That right now.
What's that?
Currently, we do not allow that.
Ever? Like you're like so like Needham three hundred or like the fireworks, they don't put any signs on library property?
This is library only. Right.
So I guess, right, we weren't trying to change the intent of the existing policy.
I understand. But I mean, if we're if we're looking at revising policies, I think it's might be worth questioning whether or not there should be changed minimum.
So I think, you know, thinking about, and this is kind of taking it to its logical extreme in a very unlikely worst case scenario. But if, you know, there were pressure for the library to sort of use some of its outdoor areas, sort of a townwide information center or something. I wouldn't want this to open the door to that without having the trustees be a part of that process. So I'm not sure I'd put in like a blanket statement, but I I guess it could still be at the discretion of the library director. But the library director will always be a town employee and there can be there can be pressure in that sense.
I'm just I'm just bringing it up. I don't.
It it may make the job of the library director easier if it's if the outdoor areas is limited in fact to these areas compared to having to respond to all sorts of requests for non-library activities which can raise problems when you accept.
Right. And you know what I'm saying? Like especially that corner up there is such a prominent location.
Yes.
It also has the word.
Right.
So that would be a change in a significant change in policy would be to allow any or a whole variety of or town organizations to advertise in front of the library. So we don't now. That's not, but and it's never been allowed. So, you know, that's something the trustees could change.
Could you have it at the discretion of the director and the trustees?
I think the money meeting, the timing.
Yeah.
What were you going to say?
I would just say we have this as a one A because we didn't think this was uh gonna be this kind of discussion. But it's fine if it is, it would just probably become a one C.
We're doing we're we're exercising a muscle that we haven't used in a while. Galen, would you like to add something?
So I can tell you that when it comes to the newsletter and to the electronic boards in the building, unless we are co-sponsoring that event, it does not go in various places. Which means there are some town things that they would like this to put up into the newsletter, but don't go in and they don't go up on our boards unless we're co-sponsoring it.
Makes sense.
The bulletin boards?
Yes.
The electronic boards.
The electronic. Okay, okay.
The ones that we control for our own internal publicity for our own events. Unless we're co-sponsoring it, it doesn't go. I think I'd like this in that I think what your point is, Rob said, if there was to be a deviation, the town wants to put something we, the trustees, back approve. Life of policy, would that be allowed? If we were to keep it, nobody other than the elephant in the library, the friends. The town wanted to put up something. Then would we need to approve that?
This is a silly question, but the town probably, I mean, again, not a lawyer. The town probably could anyway. Technically, they own space. I mean, the library is an organ is a organization of the town.
So this came up.
Right.
Well, they have to abide by the library policy.
Do they?
Yeah, we govern the library.
Well, you have to think of it in terms of this. So so our bylaws are something that is actually part of the town.
Right, right.
Rules.
Right.
And they govern what we do.
Right.
Right? And so if the policies are in here such that like we're in charge of the policies, then any change or, you know, you know, or deviation from that policy would have to be approved by the trustees.
Yes.
Yes.
So on technically, yes.
On on June first, when I was commuting to work and entered Needham and saw those Needham Pride sign on the lot of PSAB. And then saw there was one at town hall and I got to the library and there wasn't one. You know, I called the town manager's office and said, oh, can we get a sign too? Because it looks like we're not supportive of this townwide thing. And the response was no, because the board has left and approved the signs and they have a jurisdiction over the buildings that you see the signs at and the trustees determine what goes up in the library.
But if you wanted that now under the proposed policy, you wouldn't be able to.
We we talked about a procedure perhaps every September where we, the trustees do what the select board does, which is potentially approve. It does say information. So uh, you know, could approve for signs like that. As we do, as you approve the holiday schedule for a year, that perhaps in September, the trustees could approve a set number of signs.
But we'd have to amend the policy.
Very specific.
The policy as proposed would not allow that unless we.
The law, then we talked about the trustees as being part of the library. And so if the trustees approved a informational sign, our thinking was.
For the library.
The library is inclusive of the trustees and me.
Library is the trustees, trustees are the library. Use the term library.
So that's a little unclear to me because that was that that's an interpretation that means the trustees can approve anything they want, whether it's related to the library or not.
No. Oh, yeah, yeah. Signage? We could. Yes, we could.
Okay, I will. That's not clear to me that that would be intent from reading this.
Yeah, I don't think like I wouldn't have thought library included trustees. Okay, well, we can but pop in the front libraries, including the trustees or something.
The chart just got a little bit more complicated.
Yeah. You know, and there's not necessarily, there's not an explicit mechanism in there about how we might approve signage beyond the things that the library director.
I mean, you could just say at the discretion of the director or the library and or the library trustees. And then we have discretion as well.
But I don't know that the policy should allow the trustees to approve something that the library.
Yeah, it's feeling nowhere happening outside. Yeah, that seems that seems weird.
Library, description of the library director. And trustees, but then that would preempt, then it right, and vote, you'd have to vote for it.
Yeah, you don't want that.
Yes, Rob, Rob, what would you like? Would you like flexibility to be able to put the Needham Pride sign out?
It's a great, yeah.
Or would you like to keep?
There could be some staff members or patrons who think the absence of it means something. So that was my concern. I don't think, you know, on the other hand. I don't like visual pollution. Not that it's pollution, but you know, I don't want I would like to avoid like every week something up.
We do have lots of places inside the library with all sorts of of ways of celebrating various things and, you know. I I I wonder. I I kind of like Megan's suggestion of just adding, just in the name of simplicity, just adding the word only. And that gets us pretty much where we are now. So we will.
Yes, I do too. I think that, yes.
You know, for like, yeah, a bunch of places we could say shall be available for a limited time, only for signs for the marketing programs, et cetera. And that brings us to where we are already, right? That's just restating the existing policy. And then if we find that there is a need to get out information, we can always amend this policy at a pretty short notice.
The other the other possibility is it's just looking at the language. After it says for the library, the friends of Needham Public Library and the Library Foundation of Needham or otherwise at the discretion of the library director.
What's or otherwise?
It means it doesn't have to be for the library, the friends.
But I don't want every candidate.
You don't, then in the town, I don't even want that. I I would like to give you the freedom to have that pride sign. Okay.
I agree. We don't want a playground with a zillion organizations coming.
That's right. Exactly. That's what I'm saying. Real estate. Maybe we should put a sign.
And I think it works the way it is working in terms of limiting it.
Make some money.
Yeah, library related. And Rob is suggesting that we, we, the trustees, can entertain, right? Other organizations, whether coming up with an annual list, if there are such things such as Pride flag or other things.
But I think Jay's point was helpful because it made linear sense that we're doing something in conjunction together as opposed to having like with your word of the hodgepodge, just everybody, okay, we're going to do this this month, this month. But it really makes more sense and it actually gives us some leverage to say, are you going to do this in conjunction with us? As opposed to somebody just wanting to free willy nilly to say, well, we want, we saw that there was a space, we want to do this. But it should be something and it gives more.
Organizations in town.
Exactly. But it also gives that discretion back to Rob because it's like he can say, well, we want to we want to sign on to this with you, fully knowing what we're going to do. And that and it in in some way it will diffuse a lot of the, well, why didn't you take this one? Because we're not doing it in conjunction with the library.
So so like Alan was just saying.
Exactly.
Things that are happening where the library is a participant or a.
That's why you regularly get asked to advertise stuff on our bulletin boards or our newsletter for events that are being placed here that are not sponsored by us. Okay. Because the policy. I like that.
So somebody who's just.
Too much information. So if we keep library information, library information on the newsletters, those words make sense. I like the old policy. I like adding.
And which all the space, this our debate that we're just having now maybe explains why we kind of bury the old policy very believe. By saying, you know, you can put yourself up on the vault boards, you know.
But we're gonna have, Rob's gonna do the bulletin board policy.
Yes.
Cut everything out. Only library.
So I just want to return to the remind us of the key issues here. One, we don't want to flood Rob and the staff with requests. Two, we want to make sure that we reserve the library's right to advertise things that are the libraries in those spaces. There is an open question as to whether or not information for the library is equivalent, means that the library has to like co-sponsor something. If it is not a library originated program to be advertised. And also there's an open question as to how do we want to handle things that are townwide? Like the pride stuff that that we might want to support, but also we might not want to be in the business of supporting every single thing that the town wants to promote.
And and it raises the risk if you support one thing, then you get into conflict about whether I support something else.
Yeah.
Not support advertisements, support a lot of things.
But that's but that's the but like when we get into something like this great edge case at the pride, right? It actually has this, you know, perception that it is support.
Especially if we don't have a whole.
Right, or not support.
So do do with that question that you just posed us, do you think that that Rob's suggestion of the trustees approving a list once a year of
Sounds if we knew it was coming, right? Like we knew that the town wanted to put up pride signs in March or whatever.
Well, I guess.
I'm making that, I don't know, whatever, June that.
But it would also require that people would have to get in line if somebody, if the, you know, the quilting society came in and said we want to put up our sign for our event, then we could say, okay, well, put your request on a list that will go before the trustees every January or whatever, then we would make our decisions, right?
So it has to be some criteria.
Well, I was simply thinking about, let's say, for once a year approves the signage that is not like event based. It's sort of like cultural or historical.
Right.
On recognition things that that would be the thing that maybe in September, you know, that we could I can get a copy of what they approved and bring it here. And if there's interest in the trustees doing something similar for these non-event type of signs or like informational.
I'm also not hearing an appetite for opening up.
Right.
Advertising to anyone in the town. And so we don't want any language to suggest that.
We'll be able to say, I I mean, I I think, I mean, I I don't want to keep going on. So I think like I can make a motion.
There isn't anything to vote on today.
There's not. Okay.
No, this is discussion. We will.
We're not voting tonight.
Okay.
We can vote on this.
Can I say? Can we do the language such the the way that Megan said it or Robert or whatever, with the only in there as a policy to then be discussed, to be voted on? In such that if we decide over time or Rob thinks about it or the staff thinks about it or whatever over the next month before we vote on it, that no, we do actually want to have some sort of
Alex.
An amendment to.
No, I'm I'm not requesting.
An exemption.
No, no, I'm just saying the exception. I'm saying we can always amend the policy again later if we need to.
Right.
So I don't know that we necessarily need to make this decision right now. This is what I'm trying to say.
But that's the kind of point of what we're doing.
Is it? This is definitely just come on tonight. So no one's had a chance to really think about that.
Well, in December, you know, that's when.
But it would be helpful to share a proposed policy before the next meeting.
Would you write that?
Now that just.
Which is what we, you know, that's the packet that would be in the packet.
But yeah.
So we, no.
Yeah. Did you mean both of them active?
No.
So if there are changes, I think.
Cover with the side conversations with me.
So the addition of the word only, I think I'm hearing that that would make sense. I make sense to me.
And Megan also thought of perhaps removing the for a limited time so that there's flexibility. The extent is necessary.
That's pretty flexible, I think. For a limited time is a very flexible phrase.
Very long sentence in its body. So we took out that phrase. I'm just not sure what it does.
Right, because uh because this leaves the placement and the removal of the signs up to the discretion of the library director. Doesn't have to be specified for any time.
Right. And then one other thing that we were just briefly discussing down here, that word for the library, information for the library, it just feels weird to me.
Related to?
Related to. That's what Rob just said. Yeah. So like related to the library makes feels better. Related to, that's what Rob just said, yeah, it's like related to the library makes, feels, feels better.
Well, that's interesting because the related to, um, opens up the opportunity to actually, uh, go with the townwide celebrations. Right?
Related to is a little broader.
Yeah.
And also less for like, get what Gail was saying about like co-sponsored programs, because those are related to the library but aren't the library itself.
Yeah, that might actually offer the flexibility we want without opening the floodgates.
And it's still subject in discretion of the library director. So we want it to be narrow and not overly broad so that you're not dealing with all sorts of requests.
Yeah, that could work, related to.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like we have a revised.
Yeah.
Why you say yes, the one thing. You don't want to go there.
Yeah, so, so we would insert only and, um, information only related to the library. So they're only related to the library, that's, that's what we got.
All right.
I thought it's only, only for signs.
Only for signs is where Rob is putting you on.
Oh.
Get rid of for a limited time.
Available only for signs.
For signs for the marketing of programs, events, or information related to, okay, I had.
Yeah.
You may have the word for twice too close together, but you can help with words with that.
All right.
All right, we'll put that together and, and get it circulated more.
Thank you so much. I was really, uh, hopefully we all feel like we got a workout.
Multiply it out, so the multi-page ones will take five hours discussion or five days. One sentence for twenty minutes.
Well, this is, so this is where I can work with both of you to think about the agenda, right? Um, and what are things where we could compress, um, time in the agenda, uh, in order to make more space for the policy work? Because I think this is really important and we want to make sure these things can breathe.
Are one of our most, possibly the most important thing that we do is, but.
Yeah, and, uh, I can make sure we get there. At the meeting chat. So, uh, moving forward, um, uh, library art exhibits committee report, so I'll turn it back to Kenny for the next.
So, um, we have, uh, really just six, we currently is very nice display for two months of the Needham Art Association. Everybody can take a look, there's quite a range of different styles and abilities up there, that's, that's great. And so that goes through the end of the year. In, uh, twenty twenty five, we seem to have only six months, I mean, the anticipation is that the, uh, work will start in July. The renovation of that, uh, second floor space, so we're going to be, uh, filling six months. I don't have the official list in front of me tonight. We are still, our one kind of, we have all, we have, uh, let's see, Robert Shutterly, Americans Who Tell the Truth is coming in for all of January through first of February. With a talk on January sixth. After that, we have, we have a opening that we're trying to fill. But, um, our Boston artist, Jerome Long, has, he does not feel ready. I've also reached out to a wonderful artist, Ashley Bryant, uh, it's actually his estate. An African-American writer, artist, illustrator. But it sounds like his artwork is on a very faraway island in Maine on the Islington, Cranberry, and they don't want to have to bring his stuff out. On, in the middle of winter, so they decline. So we're, we're still, we're going to be looking for something for March. We haven't, uh, nailed that down yet, but otherwise then we have the usual parade of, um.
Needham Open Studios, followed by Needham High School.
High school artists.
The, uh, plastic art award winners, senior artists. I believe we did, there is someone coming in to unite.
Yeah, we have to, yeah, so.
We did say yes to someone for you.
So by next, next month, I'll have a list for twenty twenty five that we can.
Great, thank you. MacGyver series?
Sure, uh, real quick, we have a great presentation here on Sunday with Eric Hertz's colleague, Carrie Mution from Holland.
Yep, yep, it was, it was so cool. She talked about asteroid hunting, she is really involved like a, a national and global scale in that. Brought in some fragments of real famous asteroids or meteorites, um, which was really cool. Absolutely fantastic, talked forty-three people attended. Um, I will be working on a spring program as well for, and many thanks to Galen for, uh, doing so much of the coordination for her.
I, I wish I had gotten an email notice about this.
Yeah, or social.
Hearing, because I get, I get it.
Rob, it was, it was on Facebook.
Yeah, I don't get the, you know, but I get the email notices for the friends, things and this and.
That's a good idea.
I, I, I was, you know, fluffing around on Sunday without really knowing that I was missing something.
For the next one, I'll be sure that the electronic outreach is aggressive.
Yeah.
Relentless.
But that's a good question, I mean, the friends does very much, uh, email.
Yeah.
It's movement, it's, you know, the MacGyvers, since it changes hands every year, uh, is a little, you know, less, um, organized about publicity, I guess.
So, yeah, is that something Rob, we would need to, um, have work with you, the work with an employee for that buddy of yours. Like Instagram, like the library's Instagram?
We actually just put it up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, it went up on the, yeah, Needham Facebook page, it went up on our Instagram page.
Okay.
And it was library notes.
So it was library notes.
So I. My bad.
Like these from Needham or something, these you need them or something.
I would be glad to tell you that my work with MacGyver series is I will do the poster, I will be booking, I'll make sure. Sign up things up on the website and all that, but when it comes to publicity, it's up to the trustee.
Well, maybe just an email to the trustees.
I don't do that.
If only there's some sort of policy on. An outdoor signage for the friends.
I don't do a press release, but how do you give sources?
On size.
All right.
You guys.
That would be a library event, we couldn't do that if we wanted to.
Yes, you could.
If Rob wanted to.
It's nothing, well, it's something out there if you want it out there, but I.
But it, but it's on the line and the press releases are live.
Friends have to do their own press releases too.
Yeah, all right, so.
It's the foundation theoretically, you have to do their own, their own event.
And the art exhibits, it's on the website, but, you know, we, if I want to publicize something.
Yeah.
I mean, Art Bloom is very, like, Art Bloom is always very well happened.
Well, that's, yeah, that's hugely popular.
I was talking to them today, so we are all set.
Art Bloom?
Yes.
That's legendary in this.
We get lots of emails at the town hall from.
Yeah.
Moving forward, uh, friends of the library, uh, Jay?
Well, you, you'll be happy to know, given our time and concerns, that I was unfortunately unable to make the last friends meeting. So I don't have anything to report, I sent a note to ask if there was anything special to report, but I'm, I'm not aware that there was. There was a, a friend's event a couple Sundays ago, Mimi Baird, I don't know if anyone here went to that book, book event, I, I, I didn't, so I don't have anything to report.
Rob, did you have a note from?
Just to let the trustees know that, uh, staff, we are working on our budget request for calendar year two thousand twenty-five, uh, from the friends.
Uh, library foundation?
And maybe there also, Rob, you could talk more about that than me relating to the application for grants.
Yes, so last Friday, thank you, Jay, last Friday, we submitted, um, two grants for children's programming and one for adult programming. For the period of January through June two thousand twenty-five, um, based on a set amount of money that is available for us. So at the November board meeting next week, um, they'll vote on those grant applications.
And also just to note, to thank the, um, and is supporting the, um, Shutterly, Americans Who Tell the Truth exhibit for six weeks and the talk. That, that's considerable expense that they.
It is, they voted that separate grant, that's over seven thousand dollars there's guys.
Wow, wow, thank you for the generosity.
Yeah.
So is that your report from library foundation?
Yes, it is.
All right, trustee comments?
It's a busy night.
I can see this policy stuff's gonna be fun.
A quick ending.
We'll get, we'll get there, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, we are adjourned.